I'll call this meeting to order. Please write your pledge of allegiance. Okay, roll call that the record reflect that all members are present. Student representative.
Hello, hello. I just have a little. So juniors will be taking their ACT on Tuesday, April 2nd. They're very excited for that very long test. The play held auditions on Monday, March 5th and Tuesday, the 6th. For News is Off, it is a murder comedy. It is going to be really funny and I'm pretty sure show dates are in April. And we have started practicing and it is going to be wonderful. We have a wonderful past. There are a lot of younger kids in it so that all of us seniors graduating will have someone there for when we do leave. We are very excited for that. Seniors just put down $20 for their senior class trip. They're going to Minneapolis from All of America and then they are going to a Twins game if everyone brings money. And they also just checked their names on their diploma and signed. We're really excited. We have a blood drive coming up soon. We're looking forward to that. The close-up group is all ready to go to Washington DC. They'll leave on Sunday, March 17th and they'll come back on Friday, the 22nd. They are really excited to go. They've, we've been fundraising for a long time and we are really excited to get on a plane and just not have snow for a few days and then come back to it. Girl softball begins this week. Track practice started today. And since sports are just starting, we don't have anything going on. But we are very happy that our boys swimming team went to state. Al Kurtsmacher, Robbie Lacary, Nathan Spearing, and Robert Kelson. We were, we were very excited for them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to 5.0, agenda additions and deletions.
I have a couple. The first one would become 11.2, retirement of Karen Terryo. On 11.1, in addition to 11.1, under Boys Track would be Alan Holly as a volunteer.
What number would that be, Jeff?
Under 11.1, spin coaching assignments. Alan Holly would be added as a Boys Track volunteer. And then under 12.7, it says approve increase to media center specialists that should read point 2 FD. It currently reads point 1.
For which one did he want to add there? For which one? 12.7?
Yeah.
Yeah, point 2. Got it. Thank you.
And just so that everyone understands, Director Sarkin did ask me beforehand about the deadline for moving teachers on special assignment. And I can just notify that individual that, that there would be a change in their assignment. It doesn't have to be by board action. If I want to hire her back and board will approve that. I can just notify her that, that there would be a change to the position.
The notification must be given to the other party in writing by March 15th for the following school year. So I think it takes board action, just like our other layoffs?
But it's not a layoff though, it's just a change of assignment.
Oh, well.
I mean, there, there is no layoff there, she still has rights to go back in the classroom.
Okay, but what, what's the purpose of this date then? Either party can request a change in the assignment. Well, anyhow, this is, want to discuss it, but let's put it on.
Yeah, let's put it on the agenda for discussion, Jeff. So we're not in the middle of the.
That's fine.
Would you, would you like to add that to the agenda somewhere? For discussion?
Maybe 12.8.
It does say the board shall determine, so that is a board action?
Yeah, because we don't know who you're.
Doesn't matter.
Who you're talking about, so.
It doesn't matter.
All right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That'd be 12. something?
12.8. Can I get a motion to approve the additions to the agenda?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 6.0 visitor input. Do we have nobody tonight? 7.0, approve the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
I'll second. Oh. Okay, motion by Sather, supported by Lottecker. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 8.0, approve the treasurer's report for the second check writing in February and the first, in the first, in the month of February and the first check writing in March.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. And being this is the first time I'm doing this, if I'm doing something wrong, someone probably please lap me or correct me or will back up. But as far as the, the second check writing for the month of. February.
Sure, this will help you, Matt. That'll help you out. Just read the highlighted.
Oh, yes, yeah, thank you. The, the total disbursements per the enclosure in your packet are $299,453.56. As far as the treasurer's report for the, the month of February, total receipts, $1,355,971.77. Disbursements, $682,844.52. Payroll, $677,543.76. Balances, as of the end of February, checking balances in Miners Bank, $3,503,224.17. First National Bank of Gilbert, $2,058,722.46. Total cash, $5,561,946.64. The first check writing for the month of March, total disbursements, $175,489.31. And be happy to try and answer any questions?
So can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
Also move we approve the treasurer's report for check writings of February and March and general receipts as presented by the treasurer.
I'll support.
So it's, it's a motion by General East, supported by Lottecker. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You did great.
Yes.
Pressure's out, Jeff.
9.0, consent agenda. Consent agenda, approve the minutes. A, B, approve the, approve the media minutes. B, approve the request for summer debt program. C, approve last day for seniors. D, approve CP agreement with Vermillion Community College. E, approve resignation of Palms advisor.
I will move, consent agenda except pull up D for discussion, please.
Support.
Any discussion? On that, you said you want to remove E?
Just D separately.
D, you want, you want to remove? Okay. Okay, so.
Just itemize that one, not separately. Improve A, B, C, and D.
So did you want to move D then to what part of the, of the regular, that'd be in addition to?
10.0.
Right after.
Both 10.0.
Well, right after this.
Okay, right, very good.
Either, it doesn't matter.
Okay, all right, sorry about that. So D for discussion, okay. Any more discussion on that? To approve the agenda as stated with the removal of D for discussion. Can I get a motion on that?
We.
Okay.
I did.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 10.0, items removed from the consent agenda.
I just have a question about. What about Masabi? We, why are we going with Vermillion instead of?
We do that too.
I know.
It's coming.
But this is for a particular.
We have, we have agreements with Vermillion, we have agreements with Masabi and Lake Superior College.
So are they different programs and courses?
Yes.
And is it something that Masabi doesn't, doesn't offer or doesn't have?
Actually, yes and no. For instance, the forensic science class we do through Lake Superior College because the other two don't have it. There are some instances where Masabi Community College does not accept our instructors because they're not, they don't meet their qualifications, so we have to, but I don't want to single out those individuals.
No, no.
So we have to go with Vermillion on that particular course just because of the instructor risk. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does. What are the reasons for not accepting our instructors?
Masabi is, is the best way to put this. There is, do you know the name of the standard that's up here now? Most community colleges in the year 2021 will go to the standard. I can't think of the name of it off the top of my head, but essentially they need a master's degree plus 18 credits within that subject matter.
In that field, yeah.
And Masabi is enforcing that now. Whereas like Vermillion and Lake Superior College do not. So they can still have a master's degree and teach said course from Vermillion whereas they can't do that with Masabi. We only have currently two instructors that are, meet the qualifications for Masabi.
So then, the other part of that is Masabi is accredited but Vermillion is not accredited? As I understand it?
I don't think so. Do you know anything about that? I don't believe that, I don't believe that's true.
Okay, that, that's what I, that was my understanding, that they were accredited. And that there could be a problem with students taking their credits to another college? If they're accredited?
Well, there's, there's problems with them taking their credits to another college depending on where they go. I mean, it doesn't matter if it's Masabi, Lake Superior, or Vermillion. There are kids that do experience problems. Like if, if, let's say they took calculus from, and it was through the Masabi range and they decided they wanted to go to University of Minnesota, the main campus, they probably would not transfer. Because the University of Minnesota has just decided that they don't take those credits.
Okay. So the difference then for, just calling junior colleges, but being accredited or not accredited? What's the benefit or there's no benefit at all or there's no?
Well, I don't know that there, there's ones that are accredited and not accredited. It's, it's, it's all about whether the receiving college or your institution is willing to take those credits. It doesn't necessarily, there's, there isn't really a rhyme or reason to it.
Now, if, if I might just add, just because I got some, have some recent experience with this. It seemed, I mean, what I've seen, the colleges or the credits from Vermillion transfer, just like the credits from Masabi transfer. So I don't see anything in looking at this, and believe me, I've looked at this quite a bit. Whereas Masabi or Vermillion, one is treated preferentially versus the other. Typically, they'll accept credits from Vermillion for the same class they'll, or from Masabi, they'll accept them from, from Vermillion.
And, and it's really, I mean, honestly, it's no rhyme or reason. I had, Hamlin University was going to accept all of my credits, UMD only accepted a portion of my credits.
Yeah, then, the University of Minnesota system doesn't accept a lot of community college credits, they just don't.
And we, and I went through that, or our family did, with credits taken at Itasca. There was an issue with my, with them being transferred to the BSU. They didn't quite, like, well, you know, you know, so. But they eventually, it got worked out. Now they're accepting.
And my experience is UMD will accept the credits from Masabi or Vermillion.
UMD will, for those ones, I won't say other ones. Okay, so again, we're going with Vermillion because Masabi doesn't have these particular courses?
Those particular, well, those particular courses that we're going through Vermillion, we don't have an instructor that.
Okay, that's what you said.
Needs qualifications from Masabi.
Okay, and then is there a?
We're working on that though.
Wondered if there's a difference in cost? Maybe Vermillion was more economical to her? Is it all the same?
It is the same within the Minskew system.
Okay. Those were my questions.
So.
And it is going up.
So 10.0, the item that was removed from the agenda was the, the CP agreement with the Vermillion Community College. So now we're back to approving that, correct, Jeff? Approving, approving item D from the consent agenda. So can I get a motion to approve item D that was removed and brought to 10.0 for discussion?
I'll move. I will support.
Motion by Sather, second by Lottecker. Any, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Abstain. I abstain.
Okay. 11.0, personnel. Approve the 2019 coaching assignments as presented in your board packet. And 11.
With the addition.
Yeah, with the addition of.
Alan Holly and track.
Yep, yes, with 11.2, Alan Holly and track.
I will make a motion. Were you going to say something, Jeff?
No, I mean, it's, nothing really changed from last year's.
So motion, motion by?
I will make a motion to.
Motion by Lottecker.
With the addition of adding Alan Holly as the track volunteer coach. Support.
Okay. Motion by Lottecker, support by Sather. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I abstained.
Understand.
For the record.
So that'd be 6.0 with one extension. Okay, 12.0, new business.
Yeah, no, 11.2. Additional 11.2.
Okay, 11.2, add Alan, or Al Holly?
No, the retirement.
Karen Terryo, retirement.
Okay. Okay, 11.2, approve the retirement of Karen Terryo. Can I get a motion?
I will make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Letter of thanks for many years with our district and.
38.
She is going to be missed very much so.
I was in her first class, I'll come full circle, I guess.
That's great.
Miss Olson.
How many years, Jeff?
38.
38 years.
And I believe this was the last year that her and her husband were doing the Sweet 16.
Yeah. Yeah, so was last year and the year before that, and the year before that.
Kind of like a George Sheridan kind of thing. Some letter of thanks and, and all.
Absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12.0, new business. Update on the Hope program.
Mr. Chair, invited Mr. Bowles to give you a little update on the Hope program.
And when Angie spoke to me about it, she suggested I speak about Reach as well, so you're, you're getting that as well? I hope that's not an agenda issue. Like I said, I'm Alyssa Bowe, I teach the Hope program and the Reach program. Part of what's come up lately, as I'm talking to students about these different programs, is that they are two entirely separate programs. And so I'm kind of going to get into that and that's actually part of why I wanted to bring both of them into this. Because I know we have a misconception probably amongst the students and maybe amongst the community members that know about these programs, that they're kind of piggybacking off of each other when they're in fact two separate programs. So, Evelyn Gilbert though, like all schools, has a population of kids. I'm not loud enough. That's, that's new. Has a population of kids who just aren't quite making it. Maybe they struggled with math in fifth grade and learned that staying under the radar kept them out of trouble. And now they're years behind and feeling like passing math is a pipe dream, which also puts graduation completely out of reach. Maybe things at home are rough and nobody is checking homework or asking about their friends. Maybe they struggle with mental illness and they're absent more frequently than they ought to be. Maybe they had a bad experience with a teacher and now are terrified to ask for any kind of help and would rather fail than ask. Maybe they should have qualified for special ed in sixth grade but barely didn't qualify. For these situations and quite a few more, we have the Hope and the Reach programs at Evelyn Gilbert High School. And I teach both although they're not the same, but they're kind of similar, related in some ways. Hope is an ALP or an alternative learning program that's housed within EGHS. I teach math and English through the Hope program and the math I teach is dependent on what the kids in the program need. So this year it's geometry, last year it was algebra II. Their other classes are in the rest of the high school. I use the regular textbooks that teach geometry and I, because I am an English teacher, I write my own curriculum to teach English. We just completed a poetry unit that actually went remarkably well for considering that I had a bunch of junior and senior boys and one female in there all listening to Shakespeare and Haley's laughing because she can picture those gentlemen in my class. But they actually, at the end, they presented their own poems and took them apart and told me the poetic devices used in them and I just about had tears in my eyes. We are now reading a novel and we did an essay before that poetry unit. In geometry, we're about a chapter behind where Mr. Chad's class is. Hope in the smaller class sizes that come with an ALP allow me to work more individually with students. In addition to the curriculum, we look at grades on a weekly basis. And I follow up with other teachers and/or parents if I notice their grades slipping. My students are very familiar with my schedule and will sometimes come down to my classroom to work on other classwork if they feel that working one-on-one would be helpful. I've had a student tell me that he likes coming to my classroom because he feels comfortable asking all the questions and getting help without feeling stupid. And I want to clarify there, I don't think that other teachers intentionally shame our students. I do think that a lot of the kids that I see are very sensitive to negative feedback. Any kind of negative feedback including, were you listening when you were talking in class? And that that will shut them down. And so we work on that kind of resilience in my classes. We work on saying, well, that teacher wasn't being rude to you, you need to make sure that you're listening and then ask, teaching them appropriate ways to ask for help. Feeling like this room is safe is a double-edged sword that I work hard to balance. Some of these kids have never felt particularly welcome at school and they do here in that room and that's a good thing. On the other hand, they can't live their whole lives in that Hope room, so we do hard, you're laughing at me. So they do the hard work of sending them out again. I have two Hope, two kids who are moving out of Hope Math next year. But they've both expressed the Hope, that, that room and the support that it provides will still be open to them. Because the security that that support provides allows them to stretch their wings. Stretching their wings requires preparation and confidence though. I have a student who has conflict with one of her teachers. She was previously taking tests and quizzes in my room, which was fine. A lot of kids do better when they can work the problems out out loud. They'll sit at the table and, and, and think through those problems. And I'll say, what do you know about this? And they'll tell me and all of a sudden they look at me with their eyes wide and go, I, I know how to do this. I'm like, I know you know how to do this, now do it! But without that chance to think out loud, which you can't do in a math or an English classroom, they just look at that test, get overwhelmed, frustrated, shut down, and get a zero on it. At least in my class, if they come and work on that, they can maybe get a 40, which is still not a great grade, but it's better than what they were looking at. Now, we are working, now that student and I are working hard on teaching her the skills to engage with a teacher with whom she doesn't have the greatest relationship. Equipping her with skills to go back every day to class and deal with that teacher. She's also working with a separate teacher to re-engage. Her typical response in class is when she's overwhelmed, she just shuts down. And her teachers respond to that because they look out at their class and they see a student who doesn't care and isn't motivated. And so getting her to understand what she's putting out there for the teachers to see and getting her to change her own actions so that the teachers see a student who's desperately trying to work the, to do the hard work of re-engaging in a class when this is embarrassing and mortifying and how do you say to a teacher, I know I've got a 30, but I, I want to keep trying? When you, when the chance of passing may or may not be realistic. And so we're getting her to that point. So I've met with that teacher and said, this student wants to re-engage. I don't know that she's going to pass your class, but she needs to practice talking to you. And so every day she says, hello, mister. And he says, hello, student. And that's, and she wrote on her last test, I really need help with this. I don't know that I can pass, but I at least want to get better. That's huge progress for the student. Her baby step at this point is reaching out to that teacher. She's greeted the teacher by name every day and even wrote on her last test that she needs help. I was able to chat with the teacher so he knows she's taking that step, that it's hard for her. And he's being particularly open to that conversation then and rewarding her positively by giving her positive feedback and engaging with her even though sometimes what she puts off is maybe not as comfortable for either one of them. We fill her up with courage in the Hope room and then send her out to do well in other classes. Another student that I've had in Hope for, for all of his high school career now is a senior. We've been to a truancy meeting together, we've dealt with his frustration with teachers. We've actually yelled at each other a few times. Last spring, I wasn't sure that he was going to stay here. He was talking pretty seriously about transferring to E-Rats. He and I and Ms. Williams worked together on a schedule and we came up with something that he could live with and that met the full graduation requirements of 24 credits in the required courses. He came in this fall, made up all of his detention, which was not inconsiderable. In the first four months of school, worked consistently at night school to make up his online credits and has been pulling grades of C or higher most of his classes this year. We've talked about what he wants to do next year and I'm confident he's got a good future in store. We are, we, those of us that have been working with him to get him through those online courses, through that seat time and detention time, are incredibly proud of him and he knows that and then that seems to inspire him to keep that up. Speaking of graduates, there were four Hope graduates last year. Quite to my surprise, at this point, three of the four are actually continuing their education right now. For kids for whom school was not their bag at all, the risk of higher education is kind of a big one, but three out of the four are taking it and I'm incredibly proud of them. The fourth currently makes more money than I do, doing what he's dreamed of doing since the first day I met him. He's in Chicago for a month of training right now and I'm proud of him also as long as he doesn't flaunt his salary. I asked my students to fill out a brief survey on what they actually got out of Hope. I had a lot of kids say they didn't think they'd be graduating without Hope. A few of them said they liked unconditional support, a positive classroom where they can get help on anything and the flexibility that Hope gives them to focus on what's most important. Meaning sometimes my kids come in and say, I need to work on my chemistry, I've got a test that I need to study. And I say, you know, I'd much rather you get a zero on today's Hope work and not, and not fail that chemistry test. So go, there's a corner over there, pair up with this person who's also in chemistry and go study and get that work done. And they do. And yeah, they get a zero for the day in my class, but that's to me, part of the intention of that program is to provide that kind of flexibility so that the kids can prioritize. Yes, taking Strasser's chemistry class is more important than passing this. You will still pass the Hope class because I structured it so that they can potentially miss one day. But passing that chemistry test, that's big and important. They're prioritizing and taking a cue from the NLC, I structure my classes so that they can, can miss one day without it being catastrophic to their grade. So Hope deals with the academics, since the kids that come into that program are already credit deficient and are in need of academic help. It often turns into much more than that, but that's the basis of things. The basis of Reach is different. It is to provide a community and support in the form of a four-credit elective class for any student that might need it. We discuss things like healthy relationships, not just boyfriend and girlfriend, but actually more often child and parent relationships. You'd be surprised at how badly a lot of kids just want their parents to listen and offer support. So we come up with ways they can ask their parents for that and get what they need. I have a teenager, I know that's easier said than done. We talk about things like ACEs, which is adverse childhood experiences, and resilience, ways these students can build up their own resilience in life. We did a planning for the future unit. Where is your social security card? Where is your insurance card? I may have worked closely with a student who didn't have an insurance card to make sure that she could locate such a thing. What is your dream dab? We did a mental health unit identifying various mental health, mental illnesses. Through Reach, we've tested two more kids for special ed, one qualified and one still in the process but is likely to qualify. I loved having those students in Reach, but the resources those kids need are in special ed and I'm glad Reach could be a part of getting them where they needed to be. In Reach, we have a confidentiality policy, meaning that what happens in Reach stays in Reach with the obvious exceptions. I'm a mandated reporter, the students all know this. They also know that I talk to our guidance counselor about some of the bigger issues that might need large-scale resolution. about some of the bigger issues that might need large-scale resolution. This means the kids have the opportunity to open up here in ways they might not otherwise. I'm seeing this more and more as my classes get closer to each other. I have one student who has a tumultuous relationship with his mother. He'll bring his frustrations to the table and talk them out. And then my students will ask questions, offer empathy, and then move on to helping him figure out what the next best step is. It's awesome to see the kids supporting each other. In my seventh hour, I have mostly women, and women who will likely be... Can I say this, Haley? Haley is in several of my classes, and so she's a distraction right now. But she's also one of my favorite kids, and so, you know, there's that. So she knows probably who I'm speaking about, which is why I'm occasionally laughing at this. In my seventh hour, I have mostly women, and women who will likely be helpers of some sort in their future lives. Though most of them have been through their own traumas, they're also the people that other kids seek out when they have their own stuff going on. We've talked about when it's appropriate to bring in an adult to those situations. This has led to students getting in touch with me when they have a friend in crisis, and then I can either reach out to the student or refer them elsewhere. It lifts some of the scary weight of fear when they know exactly when and how and where to reach out for backup. I also model this behavior by reaching out to my own support systems. We talk about suicide, which is on everyone's radar this year, and how to deal with friends who might be thinking of suicide. Because this is a group of helpers, we talk about boundaries and how to stay healthy amid friends who are dumping on you. Relationships figure heavily into this class, and a lot of time is spent trying to get relationships on an even keel, recognizing what these teenagers can and cannot control. That's huge for teenagers. That's not within your ability to change, so you can't fix that. This is within your ability to change, so you need to fix this. This includes teachers, and we work on taking steps towards self-advocacy. That's another huge one for a lot of kids. They don't want to advocate to their teachers, but they need to. And so we need, we talk about exactly what you can do, like what words can you say exactly, almost scripting it, so that you can have these hard conversations with your teachers. One day a week is spent on academics and giving them time to study or talk through how to get their grades to a point where they're happy with them. We strategize about academics, and we work on quite a bit of self-advocacy. I've had a number of speakers come in. We've done qigong, we've had speakers on mental health. We're bringing in someone to talk about vaping, and we regularly do team building with a community volunteer. Reach hosts a hygiene closet for all manner of personal care items, and a clothing closet, although I'm still working out the bugs on the clothing closets, as it's locked in a third-floor room right now. I asked, once asked a student how she had made such a fabulous turnaround this year. She'd failed most of her classes last year, and this year is doing much better. She was sitting in Reach class, so when she said, "Well, this year I have Reach," I thought, "Well, that's very sweet of you, hon, but really..." I said, "No, really, what makes the difference? What changed?" And she said, "Because I know I have a place to go to sort things out. I have support, and I can get my stuff together here. I have breathing space." And that, to me, is the essence of what Reach gives kids, a place to feel supported, not just by me, but by a community of students and other adults, and a place to regroup so that they can go back out into school and life a little more confident and equipped. I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you might have now or at any other time.
Thanks, Alyssa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alyssa, I have some questions. How much, is there much, if any, overlap between Reach and Hope?
I have one student, yeah, one or two, maybe, students that are in both, but to address different needs.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah. I would also say that a lot of my, the temperament of the kids is very different.
I mean, but what the program offers, that's what I meant.
Oh, explicitly, no.
Because when you started to talk, I was thinking, gee, that sounds like Reach, but you were talking about Hope.
Right, the Hope is more to get their credits back.
Credit recovery.
Well, not just credit recovery, but it's not just all online. It is, it's a class that I teach. I mean, we take out the textbooks, and I teach through the material, and we read poetry together. They're not all doing online work, so it's not just credit recovery in that sense.
Okay, you did say, though, that you're using the same curriculum as the teachers in our classes are using?
Correct.
Okay. But some of it is online, I didn't know that.
No, some of the students, the students that I oversee, many of them are doing online credit recovery at night. I have the ability to log into that and to hound them about it.
That's another part of it, credit recovery.
Which is another component, but it's not necessarily part of my teaching day.
Okay, good.
I mean, it becomes a part of my teaching day, because that's part of holding them accountable for what they need.
Okay. So then the credit recovery, I know you said you do math and English, and I know you've got your English degrees and stuff. But the online credit recovery ones, that could be any subject?
They do that through night school with Mr. Brainard, so I'm not, I mean...
It's through the ALC, or the credits are through the ALC over in Virginia.
I was gonna say, I work closely with Mr. Pillsbury and Mr., oh, sorry.
It's through the Northern Land Center.
I work closely with Mr. Brainard and Mr. Pillsbury on that, but Mr. Brainard has control over that for the most part.
Okay, and that's, but that's part of your Hope program, yeah?
Well, no, it's part of what we offer as a school.
Oh, I guess I did not understand that.
To me, it sounded, sorry.
No, go ahead, yeah.
To me, it sounded like the Hope program is more academic-focused, whereas the Reach program is more of that social-emotional learning.
Yes, absolutely. And is there crossover? Well, the reason that those kids got to that point where they are that credit deficient often revolves around certain social-emotional things. But the focus of that class is the academics.
So what grade, let's see, I think I know that a Reach is for any student in any grade? Can any student take the Hope?
Well, it's offered at the high school, so it's nine through twelve at this point.
Ah, that's Reach?
Yes.
And Hope is for?
We have typically not allowed students to enter into that program until they are in 10th grade, because we want to give them a fair shot at operating as ninth graders. I know that we've been in conversation with Mr. Grip and Mrs. Williams and I about the potential of a very small handful of kids potentially being in a study hall. That's still an idea we're kind of playing with, is to see how that plays out, whether that's worthwhile, all that kind of stuff, because there are a couple of kids that we know might have needs coming in directly.
So you'll go down a little bit lower to a lot?
And, but not necessarily within the academics. We're still trying to determine what is the best course of action for those particular kids.
Okay, so on that note, you know, you're evaluating it as you go, and what kind of measurements, and how do you measure success of any program? Now you're doing both of them.
I look at whether the kids are re-engaging in their, I mean, it's all, there are numbers. I'm not going to be able to give you numbers at this point in time, so if that's what you're looking for, I don't have those.
No, I just wanted to be...
But I look, I look at the student engagement, not just in my classes, obviously, because most of the kids come to feel pretty secure in that point, but also where are they re-engaging? Where are they willing, are they willing to re-engage with other teachers? And not just hide away in my classroom. I'm seeing that fairly consistently. I'm seeing kids who are building faith in a system that has kind of burned them, and oftentimes, not just them, but their parents as well. And I'm watching them build faith in that system, and that, to me, is a sign of success. I'm seeing the kids graduate, and obviously, it could be argued that I have a lot of sway over that, but they also only see me two hours a day. They take seven classes, six or seven classes a day, so they're obviously engaged in their other classes as well.
So things like attendance, I mean, some things could be measurable, is what I'm...
Sure, and attendance, I, this year I went to truancy court with two of my, to a truancy meeting with two of my kids, because I could see both that the student wanted to engage differently and better, but maybe support wasn't quite there. And then, so we, I've pursued, I've, you know, gone to Ms. Williams and said, "We need to look at attendance and things like that." So yes, we've tackled things from that arena as well.
So that's kind of something that could be put on paper. Graduation rates may be increasing, or the opposite is dropout, but I don't know if we have what our dropout situation is. How about disciplinary improvement?
And to be honest, because, because they're in my room, and because so much more of that is relational-based, I don't necessarily know that that would be a fair indicator.
Do we still have in the system this reporting of discipline issues?
We do, yes, and I could certainly pull those up, but I'm also going to say that in certain infractions, we've taken other tax than writing it up as a detention.
Those, go ahead, those are the questions I had at this time.
I think you had said one student will be going back into mainstream math next year.
Two.
Two, so I think those are other measurements that, you know, when we discuss with Hope coming on board, of the goals to be able to get them into mainstream again. And so I think those pieces and all those different areas of measurement.
Absolutely.
So you're thinking we have a need for both of them, and not that maybe one could be all-encompassing, like maybe Reach?
At this point, I'm looking at two incredibly, I actually had two of my Hope students who thought that they would take Reach as an easier credit, and it bombed quickly. And Pillsbury and I decided we were going to put those kids in there and give it a shot, and we said, "If this doesn't work, you're out." They were pulling their grades, they were doing what was required of them, but they weren't engaged emotionally. And it just didn't work, and so we actually pulled them from that class and said, "No, this isn't working." So I would say we have two distinct populations there. Is there overlap? Absolutely, but not with all the kids.
No, that's okay, yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So, moving along, twelve point two, approve the 2019-2020 calendar.
Mr. Chair, we formed a calendar committee that had a representative from each campus who developed some options, there were two options, and then they were floated out to the teaching staff to vote on. And the one in front of you now to approve tonight was overwhelmingly voted in favor of by our teaching staff. So that would be what I recommend we do as well.
I will make a motion to approve the 2019-2020 calendar.
I will second it. Any more, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question that came up, and I didn't have an answer. And I said, "Oh, it's a good question." So, some parents were talking about, I guess, why we have spring break, and I guess we don't even, I don't even know if we have a spring break. We have a longer gap of no school in April versus March, so they were kind of wondering about that as far as vacations, if there is purposeful.
Well, the one in April is the one that always falls around Easter.
That's, that's as much as I knew.
It just happens to be Easter.
And our calendars are still trying to match with the other schools, too, for sure.
Well, and they do, except for the fact that if you look at like January 2nd and 3rd, other schools are not going to school most of the days. Our folks elected not to have that long of a vacation. They put one day in March, just to break March up. Then they put another day at the end of the school year so that we didn't have to come back the last day of June.
Okay, any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve point three, approve the resolution, no, no. Approve resolution 677, establishing location for absentee voting.
Mr. Chair, this resolution is for the May 14 election. It's just establishing a location for absentee voting.
So can I get a motion to approve resolution 677, please? You can read it.
I don't need to. I'm just wondering if you want me to read it.
Jeff, do you think you need to be read?
It's not necessary.
Yes, it's not necessary.
Okay, right, then.
Okay.
We'll just move along then, huh?
Thank you.
Okay. So I ask for a motion to approve resolution 677.
I will move.
I will.
Support.
Any discussion?
One question I'd have, is the absentee voting the same as early voting, or is it just...
Well, early voting, you actually physically have to go to a location and vote right there, whereas absentee is mailed out.
Actually, you can't early vote without filling out an absentee ballot. This just came up the other day. You have to fill out an absentee application to early vote. In this case, they're the same thing.
All right, I stand corrected.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't get through political science.
Any more?
I don't feel so silly for asking the question, I guess.
Any more discussion?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Actually, that's a resolution, so you're all correct.
Oh, okay. Okay, so it was...
You probably should.
Stick to our habit.
Okay, ready?
Director Gentilini for resolution number 677, establishing location for absentee voting.
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Myself, Director Saithers, a yes. Director Lotiger?
Yes.
Director Schulberg?
Yes.
And Director Yohan?
Yes.
That is seven yeses and zero nos.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, twelve point four, approve library media specialist job description.
Mr. Chair, the next four are all my recommendation for clearing the library media specialist grievance. I would note that you don't have to do any of these if you don't want to. We can choose to do nothing, but I would recommend we do this to resolve it so we don't have to go any further with it.
I just have a question. Are, then, all of these in your deliberations with each other? Have they all been agreed by both sides?
Yes.
All four of you?
Yes. Well, I should clarify, between...
Go ahead.
Between myself and the media specialist. I'm not telling you that everybody in the school is happy about it, but she's the one that filed the grievance.
But the grievance, the grievance.
The grievance is...
The grievance, okay, and the grievance, thank you.
Unless the grievance says otherwise, I mean, I was under the impression that we're okay, right? Lee? No?
I didn't, I don't think we actually got a copy of...
I think we need to have, we need to vote first, to approve and then have discussion, right?
Not necessarily, but...
So we're going to do the twelve point four, we're going to approve the library media specialist job description. Can I get a motion to approve twelve point four?
I will move. I will support.
Moved by Sayder, support by Lotiger. Any discussion?
Okay, again, this one, this position has been agreed to by both.
Yes.
You're the representative of us and the grievance and whatever, union people were involved?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve point five, approve paraprofessional B job description. Any comments, Jeff?
No, it just changes to, so that they're under the direction of the media specialist.
Okay, so can I get a motion for twelve point five to approve the paraprofessional B job description?
I will move.
Second.
Moved by Sayder, support by Gentilini. Any discussion?
Again, this one was agreed to by the...
Yep.
Both parties, both sides. That to settle, to make the grievance go away, to settle the grievance?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's, everybody, everybody's in agreement, correct?
Yep.
Well, I mean, well, we're talking about the grievance, the grievance, the grievance party and the union rep. Okay. Yeah, like you said, not everybody might be happy about it, but to settle the grievance.
Yes.
Okay.
So motion by Sayder, second by Gentilini. And we're in the discussion stage right now, and I'm going to just tell this board, I'm going to abstain from this vote here, just because I was kind of, just because...
That's not proper, just telling how you're going to vote.
But I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say that, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I will abstain. Motion carries.
I should add too, just so everyone understands, that this is only for the remainder of this year. And then we're, part of the agreement was that we, we sit down and evaluate if this was something that will work for us or not. So it isn't necessarily a permanent change I can make.
So I know initially the board got communications about whatever, is that part in, about revisiting it?
Yes.
That's in that?
It is in the agreement.
Okay, Jeff, let's just stay with, you know, we can move that discussion.
No, that's fine. I'm done now.
Okay, we'll move that to, if you want to discuss more of that, we can move it to somewhere on new business, to 12.9, if you want to.
We can have, we can have. So which one are we voting on now?
Okay, right now, right now we're at 12.6, approved posting para C hours for the Gilbert Media Center.
Mr. Chair, this would increase, for the remainder of this year, it'd increase two hours per day, which would give coverage to the Gilbert Media Center to allow the media specialists to do district-wide duties.
Can I get a motion to approve the posting for the paraprofessional C hours at the Gilbert Media Center, please?
Support, or sorry, I'll move.
All support. Any more discussion?
I just see the numbers, the total costs are different on the agenda and on 12.6, there's a thousand some dollars.
There's what?
The numbers are different. One says 2,909, the other one says 2,809.
Yep.
Where did you see the 2,809?
It's on the handout. We had a, we had a question about?
That was my, my typo, I guess.
Okay, well, just wanted to know which one.
Sorry about that.
Was it the 22,909?
Let me do some quick math and I'll tell you.
We had a problem about some other mistake once a few years ago, so I just wanted to make sure it wasn't the others. 28,09.
28,09, saved a hundred bucks.
So then just let the record reflect that on 12.6, the corrected number is 28,0944 instead of 29,0944.
I'm gonna say that was Justine's fault. She's the one that edited it.
Way to throw her under the bus.
She got me hurt.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12.7, approved increase in media center specialist to FTE.
Yeah, that's, that is to allow the media specialist in Gilbert to, that's to compensate for the extra duties that are being assigned to them.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve 12.7?
I will make a motion to approve 12.7, and that is supposed to be a .2 FTE, correct?
Yep.
Second.
Uh, any more, any more discussion?
I just have a question. Did we, we didn't get a, a document on this, did we? On this agreement for this one? I, I?
Doesn't look like it, okay.
Don't recall. And is in that same document which you referred to before about revisiting it, or it only being for the rest, remaining of this year, and then you're going to revisit it?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, yeah.
Okay, that'd be nice to have a copy of that for, for files.
I can, I'll send it. Go ahead. Yeah, I will.
Because I think that's a good idea to revisit this at the end of the year. And personally, I, personally, I think we should have another licensed media specialist because they can do things that pairs can't do. They can actually instruct and teach and they can take care of some teacher prep time. And we might want to consider it. So I'm glad we'll revisit it at the end of the year. We'll put it on our unfinished business list.
On 12.7, let the record reflect that the handout was at a .1 FTE. Make the correction on the record that the 12.7 will be a .2 FTE. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12.8, discussion of lane change, Jeff?
No, what it is, it's in the contract under teacher and specialist assignment. If there's going to be a change in that assignment, the individual needs to be notified by March 15th. So we do have one, one individual on a teacher and specialist assignment, that's the Dean of Students at Franklin. So I would recommend that someone makes a motion to notify Nicole Young that, that she will be placed back in the classroom for the 2019-2020 school year. That doesn't mean that she can't be a Dean of Students next year. It just means that we meet that deadline requirement. And then when we decide what we're going to do administratively, we can either hire her back or leave her in the classroom.
I'll make that motion.
And I will support.
Motion by Sorkin, second by Lotiger. Any more discussion?
I just want to say, Jeff, you explained it well, you know, what the situation is, and it is a board, a board action to be taken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 13.0, old business, we have none. 14.0, administrative report and information.
All right, here we go. Just a little bit about the collaboration. So we are planning one more trip to Alexandria on April 11th. If any of the people here that have not gone before would like to go, let Justine know and we'll make sure that we get you a spot in there. We have 40 spots that we can take down there.
I highly suggest it. I'm wondering, are, is there, how many are you projecting as far as teachers, students, or I would love to see community members offer the opportunity to go?
Sure. I just put it out to staff today. I'm anticipating maybe four or five will go. Don't know if anyone on this board wants to go. If they did, it'd be that. And then we would, we'd probably have, we'd have some room for some community members.
I have a question, so?
Yep.
So how are these trips being paid? I know we got some money from IRRB, a hundred thousand.
Yeah, we'll be eating this one.
Okay, starting, kind of starting now?
Yep. Yeah, we're on our own after, after that last round went.
Okay, and then when the, I just have a question, when the teachers go, do they take a vacation day? Do they take a personal day? Do we just get a sub?
Staff development day.
A staff development day.
I think it's important for them to know what?
No, no, that's not my question at all. It's just what pot of, pot of gold is it coming out of? That's all, for financial purposes and I don't know, well, thought it'd be qualifying under staff development. But, all right, that's, that was my question.
Well, hey, today's the first day of spring sports. It's a little rough out there.
Golf doesn't start until next week.
Don't try plowing a trailer on the track, but it snowed in this weekend, as you can see. Congratulations to Natalie Foltz. She took 53rd in the state cross-country skiing. Little note on Natalie, I just believe that she might be the only Ebbell Gilbert athlete ever to have three consecutive sports where she's gone to state. She started last spring in track, went this fall in cross-country running and, you know, what, three straight sports she's gone to state. Last week, the, our band went to competition, district competition. They received a superior rating, so that's good. And our speech team, two weeks ago went to Cherry and won that meet. These aren't little meets either. There's 23 teams at that one. This weekend, we have them right here. If you drove by the school, you'd notice it was, it was you with speech kids all over the place. There were kids in power suits and tuxedos all over the place. And our kids actually took second by one point to Bemidji. And there's a unwritten speech rule that you're not supposed to win your own meet. They actually, I mean, these are lots of large schools, Bemidji, East, Grand Rapids, those kind of schools come here. And our kids are doing very well right now. Uh, wrapped up I Love to Read Month. You can see on the right there, there's a familiar guest reader. It's Director Lotiger. At the end of the month, kids tallied up their AR points and those, the top 10 from K1 and 2 through 4 went into a drawing for a bike and you can see Connor and Myla won the up, the 2 through 4 and Jersey and Matthew were there, won the K1. So congratulations to. I'd just like to congratulate Miss Terry. She's been around for, forever. We've, we're going to miss her. She's a solid presence up on that third floor. I was digging her on, I found some old photos of, of Miss Terry. And here's a picture of them laying the foundation block, the masons up at the Franklin. I highlighted Mrs. Terry over there. So she's been here for a while. No, she's actually been here for, she started in 81. She is the last of the, last of the 697 Franklin teachers, hired by Ebbell School District. We do have one more that was, that was hired by Gilbert, but she was the last one here. So we're going to miss her. Go ahead.
We have some recognition for making a cut this, and over the last month. We have some sixth graders that made the cut for trustworthiness. Nola Kwiatkowski, Peyton Marks and Dylan Nelsons. Congratulations to them. Moving on to our seventh graders for trustworthiness. We had Alyssa Ziegler, Julia Linseth and Corinne Canary. Moving on to eighth grade for trustworthiness, we had Maggie Coscola, Wesley Holcomb and Ally Seether. Congratulations to them. And then we just had this last week, some fifth graders moving on to responsibility this month of March. Evelyn Conley, Zoe Thien and Ethan Bowe. Congratulations to all of those students for making a cut. It's a super important thing I think we're doing on the Gilbert campus. I love calling the parents and talking to them, congratulating their kids, so that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, moving along, 15.0, board member topics. John, would you like to start?
Sure. I spent about eight hours at the pasty production last, over the last week. Killed potatoes for three and a half hours on, on Thursday. It was, yeah, it was a good, good group down there. I think 4,200 pasties, 52 boxes of potatoes to peel, so.
Good time.
Great time. Bring your own peelers to temp.
Yeah.
Your doll there.
Yeah.
So that's all I got.
I might just say, word is obviously out. I mean, it's, and I'm sure we're all experiencing the same thing. There's discussion about what's happening, about the, the question that people are going to be asked in a few months here. And frankly, I enjoy those discussions and continue to encourage them.
I just would like to thank the Franklin for inviting me for I Love to Read Month. It was, it was pretty cool to read to the kids and I had neighbors that saw me there and thought, you know, it was awesome. You know, because they knew me, so it was pretty cool.
I got to hang out in Gilbert last week. They have the book fair for three days and that was great. And I went and told Mr. G that the students were very respectful and kind when they came in. Some with teachers, of course, but others came in independently in, in groups. And they were very kind and represented themselves very well, so.
Well, I would just like to thank everybody for coming, people in the audience for, for showing up and as well as, and, and thanks for the, my colleagues for giving me the support of the board chair. I just, it, it means a lot. You know, it's tough, it's tough, it's tough. I didn't realize it, but, but thank you.
You walked into a really tough, tough too.
Yeah, well, yeah.
You did a good job.
I'm trying.
You did a good job.
And that's all I got to say, Paulie?
I'm just wondering if you were, Mr. Gryphentragno's, if any of our students are going to this invitation to the courts? There's something about visiting the courts and taking students. I thought maybe that would fit in with civics class. Do you know anything about that?
I'm not familiar with.
Angie's not here.
Yeah, Angie's had a family thing, so I'm not aware of it myself.
Is it like high school kids going to visit to?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Listen to the high school. I know that you've seen it and I don't know whether it's on board.
Okay.
But I don't, but I know that we have seen it and it is what you need to look at, but I, they try not to in a second. It is a fine.
It sounds like a real good opportunity for them. I hope that they, somebody gets to go and, I mean, I threw out that, that grant the last time and you already knew about it, so I figured this time too probably is already in works. But other than that, I would like to suggest that we, maybe it's a question, when are we going to have budget and finance meetings?
Sure.
We're past middle, I mean, a bit of it, but, and that has to do with personnel too.
Yep. So tonight's discussion with, have you talked about a 4:30? Well, I'll, I'll go give Spencer those numbers tomorrow. He's been working on their estimates, so that's, it'll be quick. It'll be soon.
Okay, because, I mean, there's a lot to understand, big decisions to be made. And the other part of it is, even myself, I don't understand well the long-term facilities maintenance parts. And I'd like, if it's not you, if it's Spencer or somebody from ARC to come and have the, explain to the board, all of us, what that's about because we're supposed to have a good understanding of it before we pass that every year. And that's an expectation of us as board members from the state, that we have input and, and understand what it's all about.
I'll bring Cindy and Kenark. She's going to explain it then.
Okay, that'd be good, really good.
So we'll have a study session on that or will it be just a regular board meeting?
No.
Okay.
And then the other thing we talked about in, at some other meetings, study sessions is, I think we need to continue that about the administrative structure and that ties in with Dean of Students and what we, the action we took tonight. And revisiting that and evaluating it. And so those are some of the meetings that I'd suggest we dig into. That's it.
Tom?
Okay, I would like to see the district use every possible purchasing goods and services from local merchants that are here in Ebbell and for goods and services. And then the maintenance department, is he going to make the decision which meeting he wants at, then once a month? Or do you want to post him to make a first meeting of the month or?
Tom did ask at a previous meeting if Michael could participate in a?
That's correct.
A meeting per month. And I was called, I got a phone call about that, asking, you know, if, if that was the case. And I said, I am no longer the board chair to contact you, so I don't know if he contacted you or, or not.
He did not.
Okay, so maybe you just want to reach out to him if that's, you know, if that's something we want to do? If you want to reach out to him because he did contact me too.
I mean, I think if, I think it's important that we have, you know, Jason here, maybe not as much as Mike, but probably have Jason here.
Jason too.
Have Jason and Mike here, maybe, I mean, not every month, but maybe not, I mean, I guess.
I would see the benefit of having Jason if we're discussing something, you know, technology-wise.
I have one more thing if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Now that you've said that. It's a question to you, Jeff, is that, do we have any contract on trial with Northland Securities? I know that the resolution was passed to go with Ellers for this whole collaboration thing and with, now with KA. But do we have an outstanding one? They were just here last year.
Yeah, I'm not aware of an outstanding one per se. We, I mean, we do our OPEC bonding for them and probably will continue to.
Okay.
But I don't know that you're obligated to use them for anything else.
Okay, but in conjunction with this collaborative effort now, I mean, is it out of, out of thought to have two of them working on this?
Well, I don't know. I can ask.
Yeah, I mean, you know, they've, they've been our, well, we, we originally had Ellers and then when Mr. Fahy moved over to Northland. Now he's been our representative forever, probably longer than even Karen Terry, but, so I think that maybe we should?
I can ask.
Yeah, and then we'd have to massage our resolution if you wanted to do that. And, and I don't know if there's any best interests of our district to look out for, but they've been working with us for a long time. So I'd like to revisit that.
I think they, these, these should be brought up at, the stuff should be kind of brought up at a?
Well, well, that's, I'm just putting it out there to put it on an agenda somewhere, okay?
Right.
Yeah, I have one more thing. Did we miss the joint powers recreation board meeting? Did we have to approve that? I didn't?
No, it's just their information.
Okay, okay. All right.
Okay, so are we all good?
One last question.
Go ahead.
What's our enrollment?
Our enrollment today is, I'm not going to just throw a number on the table. Everyone's waiting for me in the internet slot.
Could we get a progressive, a monthly progressive count, head count like other districts do? We used to too. And I know Virginia does.
Yeah, I can.
Let's, let's do that. That would be helpful. And it breaks down all grades.
I used to put it into my report all the time.
Yeah, but we could see all the grades and we could see maybe where things are moving. That would be helpful.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, he's looking for the numbers.
Almost there.
But we can't leave though because Jeff's going to show in the right after. We're going to, you're going to kind of go through this.
I can if you, if you need help, I can help.
I can probably, our, I might need help, but, but I'll figure out my password, so I have to go home and get that.
882.
Okay, with that being said, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
And I will second it.
Jeff, you, Jeff, in those numbers, do you include? Jeff, do you, Jeff, in those numbers, do you include early?